All right, roll call. Rakowitz?
Here.
Brown?
Ni-hao.
Cottner? Dunn?
Here.
Pagula? Pope?
Here.
Rapp? Short?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Amen. Let's get this done. First of all, we've got to formally approve the minutes as of September 12th. Do I hear a motion to approve them?
No move?
No move?
On favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Dan Heiss, roles in responsibilities matrix.
Yes, that is in your document there. It just outlines what we have to do. The only item I want to bring to your attention is that where it says meet with the internal auditor. At the last meeting, due to time constraints, we had to cut that short. And in lieu of being able to talk to the full committee, I had a separate conversation with Walt right after the meeting. And that's noted in the matrix. Other than that, there's nothing else, Walt.
Okay. Great. So Joe, can you begin to give us an update on the financial statements, please?
Great, thank you Walt. So the financial statements in your board effect material for the committee members are on slides seven through fifty. The first three pages of that are my draft letter to the board and to the committee regarding the most significant noteworthy items in the financial statements this year. So I will work through on the basis of my letter, but I'll try to call your attention to where in the financial statements I'm actually referring to as I go. Again, the statements are located, the statements themselves start on page ten and run through page fifty. So it is a clean opinion. I think that's always the most important place to start. Deloitte has audited the financial statements. It is a clean opinion for the year, which means these statements reflect fairly the financial statements with generally accepted accounting principles. In summary, the statements reflected a strong growth of the university's balance sheet and another positive operating performance. Net assets increased by six percent or six hundred and twelve million dollars this year. The new net asset value of the university is ten point five billion as of June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. In my letter, you will note three income, basically statement of activity and balance sheet ratios that we provide for some general overarching sense of how the statements are. You'll note the operating margin is off slightly this year from six point nine percent down to four point five percent. That reflects flattened revenues during the year primarily. That said, the two thousand and eighteen margin was well above the Moody's benchmark for double A one institutions of our size and scale. The four and a half percent, although a decrease does not reflect anything to be overly concerned about. Again, I'll talk about the revenues shortly. The revenue's flattened during two thousand and nineteen. The balance sheet measures remain very healthy. There were some reclassifications in how these ratios are calculated for the year based on some underlying accounting changes. But I would say the chart there does represent, my letter to you on page seven, those ratios do fairly represent the fact that we're fairly stable over the last two years, two to three years. I'll move on to the balance sheet. The balance sheet actually begins on page ten of your, I'm sorry, the balance sheet actually begins on page seventeen of the board effect material. The asset balance, asset growth was nine hundred and four million or six percent over the prior year. The asset value for the university is now fifteen point nine billion dollars. Investments increased by about three hundred and fifteen million, representing about a one-third of that growth last year. That five percent growth in the investment balance was driven by good market returns for the year, which are discussed in footnote four of the financial statements. Accounts receivable increased by eighty-eight million dollars, primarily from the net patient revenue receivable at Penn State Health. And then finally, a three hundred and forty-one million dollar increase in the total investment in plant was highlighted by a number of additions to our plant that you're well aware of at University Park, the chemical and biomedical engineering building, at Hershey, the emergency department, children's hospital expansions, and of course, our student housing and dining facilities here at University Park as well and the expansion of those facilities. So again, the three major asset items to note are the investment growth, the investment in plant growth, and the increase in the receivables. Overall, the liabilities increased by two hundred and ninety-one million dollars. So I'm now moving to page, or to slide eighteen on the liability side of the balance sheet. Liabilities are now at five point four billion, kind of in the middle of the page there. The two hundred and ninety-one million dollar increase was driven by a two hundred million dollar increase in long-term debt and a forty-two million dollar increase in other liabilities. The long-term debt was from various general obligation bonds that were issued in support of the capital plan and which financed a number of the new assets I described on the asset side of the balance sheet. The increase in other liabilities is also primarily attributable to increases at Penn State Health in specific related to their long-term medical malpractice liability and some of their retirement plan liabilities for their employees that constituted the forty-two million dollar growth in other liabilities. Regarding net assets, I will point out this year that net assets pursuant to one of the accounting changes that I'll describe a little bit later in my comments, net assets have gone from formerly three categories, which were unrestricted, temporarily restricted, and permanently restricted. The net asset section at the bottom of page eighteen, eighteen in the board effect, page seven in the financial statements, is now divided into net assets with donor restrictions and without donor restrictions. So that is some of the changes I mentioned earlier. Within those categories, we have recast that section of the balance sheet in conformity with the new accounting guidance. The six hundred and twelve million dollar increase in net assets, about six percent increase in net assets. Four hundred and eighty-three million of that was an increase in net assets without donor restrictions. I'll go through, that's really driven by our operations, and I'll go through that as I move through the statement of activities momentarily. The donor restricted net assets increased by a hundred and thirty million dollars. The composition of that was a hundred and thirteen million dollars of new restricted gifts, seventy-nine million dollars of net investment return, and then in the opposite direction, sixty million dollars of gifts released from restriction, in other words, deployed for their purpose. So the net of all that activity was a hundred and thirty million dollars increase in donor restricted net assets. Moving on to the statement of activities, which is slide nineteen or page eight in the financial statements, the consolidated operating margin, as I mentioned, is about four and a half percent or about two hundred and ninety-six million dollars. Net non-operating activities resulted in a two hundred and eighty-seven million dollar increase in net assets. I mentioned the margin decline is driven by slower revenue growth, an increase in health system spending, and an increase in E and G spending. The total operating revenues and other support rose by about two hundred and thirteen million or three percent to nearly six point six billion in operating revenues. Penn State Health, ten percent increase in revenue, which was two hundred and thirty-three million dollar increase, drove much of that. I do want to point out, when I spoke about the revenues flattening, for the first time in my recollection, tuition revenue actually declined by six million dollars this past year, and that was offset somewhat by the Commonwealth appropriation, general appropriation increasing by sixteen million. You're all aware of the freeze on in-state tuition. Again, I just wanted to, although it's not a huge fluctuation, I did want to point out because it's kind of an anomaly to seeing the tuition revenue go down, it did actually decline by six million dollars this past year. Moving to the expense side of the equation, total operating expenses increased by four hundred and eighty-two million or roughly eight percent. The largest component of that, again, was the two hundred and eighty million dollar increase at Penn State Health and their expenses. Educational and general expenses increased by about a hundred and eighty million, a hundred and seventy-nine. Within E and G, institutional support increased by sixty-one million. Penn State Health activity also contributed to that, the institutional support increase. And university enterprise IT infrastructure expenses were the other leading increase in the, on the expense side. The aggregate instruction and the mission-based expenses of instruction, research, and public service increased by about ninety-two million dollars or four percent. I mentioned the robust investment returns this past year. If you would look on page, in footnote four, on page twenty-three of the financial statements and page twenty-three of the financial statements in your board effect is slide thirty-four. That details the investment returns, about four hundred and sixty-three million for the year. That represents a ninety-nine million dollar increase or twenty-seven percent increase in our investment returns last year. As you know, it was a very good year in the market. These are a composite performance of endowed and operating investments. I just want to be clear, some of it is operating investments, others are endowed, long-term. The investment market produced three hundred and forty-three million of current-year investment returns of that overall four sixty-three. Moving to the statement of cash flows on slide twenty-one in board effect or page, I'm sorry, trying to keep them straight here, page ten of the financial statements, page twenty-one of board effect. University operating and activities, operating and financing activities provided four hundred and thirty-five million and three hundred and seventy-seven million of net cash flow for the year respectively between operating and financing, while our investing activities actually absorbed seven hundred and twenty-two million of that cash flow. Overall, that led to a ninety million dollar increase year over year in our cash balance. I would suggest that the largest part of that cash increase relates to a late-year taxable debt issuance by the university late in June. That was fifty-eight million dollars of the increase. That bond financing proceeds had not yet been deployed as of June thirtieth, contributing to the cash, the cash outflow. There was also a relatively small non-endowed investment that had been liquidated before June thirtieth, but remained in cash as of June thirtieth. With that, Walt, I'm going to take a pause on the statements themselves before I move into recent accounting pronouncements and footnotes to the financial statements and just ask if there were any specific questions on the balance sheet, the statement of activities, or the statement of cash flows.
Let me open it up to the committee to see if there's questions.
Yeah, this is Brandon here. I had a quick question regarding the decrease in tuition revenue year over year. So I understand that we held in-state tuition flat, and then out-of-state tuition also increased last year. So how do we have a net decline when we hold in-state flat and out-of-state actually increases?
Sorry. Brandon, it was simply a composite of all the in-state and out-of-state. I would say it is a volume reduction, but the in-state tuition freeze is what led to the decline. I mean, if you had looked back over time before the tuition freezes, or the in-state tuition freezes had occurred, we were seeing increases on all fronts on tuition.
Well, in round, this is David. Right, in round numbers, you know, the split between resident and non-resident is roughly seventy-thirty across the entire university. So obviously, you know, resident tuition rates have a far greater impact on our total revenue reported than non-residents.
So I guess what you're saying is that the explanation is a shift towards more in-state students coming to the university versus out-of-state?
Well, no, I think that seventy-thirty has actually held pretty stable.
That's been stable for a number of years, Brandon.
Then I guess I'm still having a difficult time understanding how number goes down.
Yeah, well, the other factor is discounting, institutional discounting also went up. So it is a net tuition revenue number. So the fact that the institutional support or institutional student aid increased year over year also contributed to the decline because that's netted out of that tuition revenue?
But I do think, yeah, I guess, I think Brandon's asking a really good question. It'd be great if you guys could get back to us on that because intuitively, you would still think that, I mean, it has to be a volume increase or decrease here because you would think that even if thirty percent was going up, the overall number would go up. So maybe you guys can get back to us on that. I would like to know.
Okay. We will do a breakdown of the in-state, out-of-state composition. I think there's also a graduate, there may have been a graduate student decline this past year as well, which also contributes to that. David, I don't know if there's anything you want to add, or we just want to give that, you know, give that breakdown under separate cover?
No, we'll get, we'll get the data, but I'm pretty sure that there was a small overall enrollment decrease in FY nineteen that could certainly account for some of that, you know, diminishment in revenue.
Yeah, but just, again, just to, not to lose sight of the fact that institutional aid, so if you look on the tuition and fees line of the other, of the statement of activities, if you note this.
What page are we on? Sorry, what page is the statement of activities?
Slide nineteen in board effect and page eight of the financial statements. If you look at the tuition and fees line, you see there's a net of discounts there, two hundred and thirty million dollars. So that billion eight is net of two hundred and thirty million of student aid. And if you follow that two hundred and thirty million across to the, and do apples to apples with the prior year, that number was two hundred and fourteen million. So we're actually netting out two hundred and thirty million of student aid this year versus only netting out two hundred and fourteen million of student aid last year. In other words, student, internal student aid increased by sixteen million dollars.
And Joe, would that not also with endowed scholarships, you know, the spending rate on endowed scholarships?
Yeah, that's the primary.
Emphasizing, and they've been growing significantly, and that's a good thing.
Yeah, that's the primary composition of that two hundred and thirty million is the endowment support.
I think that, like, I like to applaud the university on sort of giving more money or allocating more funds toward student aid, but I guess this is something we can, we can talk about sort of in another session, but it seems like it would make sense to take that number out so that we can make a sort of an apples-to-apples comparison on an annual basis on what's on the revenue number.
Yeah, Brandon, that's actually an accounting principle.
That's a gap requirement.
That's a gap requirement. We need to present it as net tuition.
Okay. Then I guess the, I guess the takeaway from this is then there may be other drivers to revenue that are going to have, that may have a material effect on revenue other than tuition, so we can, you know, take a look at those and maybe increase revenues and attempt to hold tuition stable.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, there's three factors. There's rate, there's volume, and, you know, and then obviously the differential tuition that we apply across the different programs. But the volume and the rate are the two biggest drivers, and if you're setting the rate at zero, the increase at zero on seventy percent of the population, revenue's going to flatten. It's a natural byproduct.
Well, this is Ted. I apologize, I dropped off just as Brandon was asking his question. Let me, so forgive me if I'm repeating what was already asked. We have a lot of discussion, a lot of focus on actual number of students both at UP and the Commonwealth campuses. So I guess my next question is, I want to understand if the reason that tuition went down is because we have less students. I understand the accounting principles and all that. I just want to understand at the core, do we have less students and where do we have less that drove that? It sounds like there are a lot of other factors which are all relevant, but we want to understand that because as Brandon said, and I totally agree with him, that we want to make up that shortfall, not by tuition increases, but by getting more students.
Ted, this is David. From fall twenty seventeen to fall twenty eighteen, and fall eighteen is part of the revenue measure in question, our headcount enrollment across the university declined by one thousand six hundred and forty-seven students. Now, more directly correlated with tuition would be our full-time equivalent enrollment, which I don't have at my fingertips because that measures the entire fiscal year. But one can reasonably assume that if our headcount enrollment was down by over sixteen hundred students in the fall of eighteen, that our enrollment for the entire year on a full-time equivalency basis, in other words, collectible revenue would also have decreased.
Okay, I hear you, but I'd like some specifics. For example, we've had, and in fact, it probably is part of this equation, we had a blip where we had way too many students, well, forgive me, there's no such thing. We had more students than we expected at University Park, so we had an abnormally high number of people in lounges. And if we, a year later, had less people in lounges, that could be the source of the problem. All I'm trying to do is understand the demographics. When you say a decline, was that a decline at University Park? Was that a decline at Commonwealth campuses? All I'm trying to do is put my hands around the dynamics of where the change was in terms of students.
Yeah, I can, I can help with that, Ted. The decline broke down as follows. Three hundred and forty down at University Park, one thousand five hundred and twenty-six down at the Commonwealth campuses, and an increase of one hundred and fifty-seven at the World Campus for a net decrease of one thousand six hundred and forty-seven. Headcount for fall of eighteen?
Headcount.
Headcount.
I was afraid that was the answer, that three hundred at University Park is probably explained by what I said about lounges. I think the number I heard was over a thousand decrease at Commonwealth campuses. That needs to go in the other direction.
So if you guys could give us, at least as it relates to the audit committee, because what Ted's bringing up is a broader strategic issue, but if you guys could kind of give us the matrix of the numbers and kind of reconcile it to these, the overall tuition and fees, I think it'd be great.
Yeah, I think we'll engage Lance Kennedy Phillips, who heads up our, you know, Office of Planning and Institutional Assessment and is the official keeper of the data, and he can also surface the, I believe, Joe, the full-time equivalency enrollment, which would be most closely correlated with revenue collections. So we'll ask Lance to work with us to pull together that information and get it out to the committee.
Okay.
So it could be that the six thousand empty seats I talked about, in fact, is seven thousand, but I would point out that the six million dollar decrease would have been an increase if we'd have filled those one thousand seats that you just referenced at Commonwealth campuses. With in-state students, we'd have had eighteen million more for a net of twelve million plus.
Yeah, it could be, but let's look at the numbers.
Thank you.
Yep, you bet. Any other questions as it relates to the, not the footnotes, but the financial statements? Okay. Joe, why don't you head into the footnotes then?
Okay, just continuing on along with the letter, I think the footnotes this year, there were a few changes that I'd like to call out. Footnote three and ten are actually new to the footnotes this year. Footnote three is disclosure of liquidity and availability of financial assets. That's on board effect, slides thirty-two and thirty-three. Footnote ten is also new, that's on slides forty-five and forty-six. That actually breaks the university's expenses into functional and natural classification of expenses. So we've, you know, we've traditionally pointed, we've traditionally, when you look at our operating expenses, we've done, I'll say, mission-based reporting around instruction, research, public service, academic support. The breakdown on slides forty-five and forty-six actually goes into the functional and natural classifications of those expenses as to how our expenditures break out. I won't spend a lot of time on that. I just wanted to call your attention to those two new disclosure items that may or may not be of interest to you and happy to stand for any questions of those. While you're looking at those, I will just remind everybody, and we've touched on this in the letter and other places with this committee, there were three new accounting standards that were implemented this year. Revenue from contracts with customers is one. The presentation of financial statements for not-for-profit entities was the second. That, that one is really the one that kind of spawned those two new footnote disclosures that I just talked about, footnotes three and ten. It also was kind of the basis for the new, the new categories within net assets that I described, either donor restricted or not donor restricted versus the former three categories. And then the following, or the final new accounting pronouncement this year was retirement benefits, improving the presentation of net pension cost and net post-retirement benefit cost. Those were mostly footnote disclosures and changing the disclosures around those topics. Other than that, the footnotes remain largely the same. I will say there, you're going to see that there are now thirteen footnotes for the financial statements, where in prior years, there were eleven. I wasn't, other than the two new footnotes, I wasn't really going to go through anything in specific. I would, I have one more topic to cover. As was disclosed to the audit committee, there was a discovery of an error in the prior year around contributions receivable. That error has been corrected in the current-year financial statements. You can, in footnote seven on page thirty of the financial statements, you can read in more detail about how that was corrected and how it flowed through the financial statements. I guess I would like just to underscore that it was not, it was determined that that last year's error was not material either to last year's statements or this year's statements, and it has been corrected through the current-year statement of activities and is reflected in this year's balance sheet in an accurate manner. With that, Walt, I would stand for any questions on footnotes, the new accounting pronouncements, or the other matters I've gone through here.
Joe, I just think for the benefit of the new members in the audit committee, I just want you to just do a very quick explanation. We have a liability for post-retirement of two point two billion dollars. We do not have a liability booked on the balance sheet for retirement benefits. And could you just explain for the benefit of the committee why that is?
Yeah, so just to take them one at a time, the, I'll call it the, loosely call it the FAS one oh six liability for other post-retirement obligations relates to our, the retirement healthcare benefits that employees, employed at the university before two thousand and ten would be eligible for under their normal retirement, if they reach normal retirement. We have, you know, a two point two billion dollar overall liability for that that extends over thirty years, and we value that actuarially every year. And the university kind of treats that on a pay-as-you-go basis for those liabilities as people actually retire. You know, we run in the neighborhood of about fifty million, give or take, in any given year, expense related to those retirement healthcare benefits. That obligation is booked on the university. Contrast that to the state employee retirement system, which is actually the retirement, the actual retirement benefits for the state. At this time, David, I believe it's about thirty percent of our workforce is in the state employee retirement system and declining.
Closer, I think, to thirty-three, thirty-four percent. It is declining.
And declining. The state employee retirement benefit was a pretty, had been historically a pretty robust benefit. More recently, that has, that program has been restated and is not as robust as it used to be. Over the years, the program has accumulated an unfunded liability within the state's books. So the state employee retirement system program itself is only funded to the tune of about sixty percent. Sometimes it's a little less than sixty, sometimes a little bit more sixty, I'm rounding to sixty percent. The forty percent unfunded liability within the state retirement system program is not required, as a FASB school, we are not required to book that on the university's financial statement. Our share of that unfunded liability, the university represents about five point nine percent, maybe six percent rounded, of the overall state employee retirement system. Our employees represent about- Our employees represent about six percent of that. Um, so you could logically, um, suggest that about six percent of the unfunded liability at the state system level belongs to the university. Um, the financial, the financial accounting standards are such that we do not have to book that. Again, we, um, the, the outcome of that unfunded liability has been significant decreases or increases in the employer contribution rate. So in other words, Penn State, as we sit today, on a, on a hundred, somebody making a hundred thousand dollars a year, we sit at a, roughly a thirty-five percent employee con- employer contribution rate. So every hundred thousand dollar employee that the university has, we also have a thirty-five thousand dollar a year, an obligation for thirty-five thousand a year to contribute to, to the state employee retirement system for that employee. Some of that thirty, thirty-five percent contribution is going towards funding the person's benefit. The rest of it is going to fund that, is going towards funding that unfunded liability in the state employee retirement system program. Um, so while there is something on the order of a billion dollar plus obligation that you could attribute to the university in the state employee retirement system program, we do not actually book that on the university's statements. It's actually a billion four rounded, um, the university's share of the overall state employee retirement system, uh, unfunded liability. Um, David, I didn't know if you wanted to use that as an entree to talk about, it kind of goes outside the contours of this committee, but I don't know if you want to talk about the-
Yeah, we're, this is something, uh, that I think we're all, like, be aware of, and, um, the committee members will recall, um, my recent presentation to the Board of Trustees about the work that Joe and I and, and others are doing with the state employee's retirement system to seek, uh, legislation that would enable us to enter into an agreement to pre-fund a, you know, uh, some significant portion of our attributed share of the unfunded liability, uh, the net result of which would be to substantially reduce, uh, the university's operating budget exposure to, you know, to the S E R S, uh, cost escalations. We are continuing to work on that, uh, and, you know, have some guarded optimism that we'll, uh, be able to push legislation through this fall, uh, get it on the governor's desk for signature potentially before the end of the calendar year, and then, uh, look, um, more closely at the, the prospects for, uh, an agreement to be struck between S E R S and the university in the late winter, early spring months. But, um, lots of, lots of work to do, um, you know, and trying to get legislation through the House and Senate with a relatively small number of legislative days this fall is going to be, um, no small feat. So stay, stay tuned, and we'll, we hope to have more to share at, uh, upcoming meetings of, of the board.
And, and I would just add, uh, if you wanted to look on slide forty-six in Board Effect or page thirty-five of your statement, um, near the end of footnote, footnote eleven actually talks in detail about the, um, state employee retirement system and the, to a much lesser extent, the public state employee, public school employee retirement system, which we do have a very small number of employees in who have brought that retirement program with them to their Penn State employment. But the biggest thing I would call your attention to in those last couple sentences is that the university's contribution to the S E R S plan for two thousand and nineteen was over a hundred and twenty-two million dollars, almost a hundred and twenty-three million dollars, and that's what we're trying to get with this legislation that David described. That's what we're trying to bend the cost curve on, so to speak, um, with certain, um, financial strategies and, and legislation.
Which would be, which would, which would be a win-win for both Penn State and the state, to be honest.
Right.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, helps lower the state's unfunded liability.
Yeah.
Uh, and so it's a, it's a win for them, and it would, uh, it stands to substantially reduce the operating budget impact, uh, both for, uh, you know, the E and G budget as well as for the auxiliary services operations here at the university.
Yep. Ted, uh, was that Ted that was going to say something?
Yeah, it was Ted. My compliments to you, uh, David, that I, we all hope for that success, and, and let me translate it to what's really important. That number that you just quoted represents a tuition decrease.
Which number was that, Ted?
Well, the, the numbers you were talking about, the what we're trying to reduce the liability by. So my compliments to you on your work.
Yeah, I would say that it, it represents an overall decrease in our expenditures, but, um, we would have to borrow money to do it, so. Um, all right, so any questions with respect to the footnotes?
Nope.
Okay. Um, I don't have any questions either. Um, so are, are there any questions before we go to a vote for the, to the overall financial statements? Any of the numbers, questions? Okay, hearing none, then let's, uh, let's, can we call for a vote right now, Joe?
I think, uh, yeah, I think we've reached the end of the agenda, and that would be the final order.
Okay, great. And then we can let Don give us a quick update, but I think we should call for the vote now. Um, do I hear a motion to approve the Penn State financial statements for, um, June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen?
So moved.
So moved. Great. Um, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. And, um, and Cindy, I know you had, um, you had something that you had to delay to stay on the call, so you're off the hook if you want to make that call. Um, but Don, Walt-
Oh, thank you.
I'm going to turn it over, thank you, Cindy. I was going to turn it over to Don for a quick I- IT update.
Thank you, Walt. Hello, everyone. Uh, so our IT modernization efforts continue, and we really have, uh, three broad areas that we are trying to advance the IT at the university on. Uh, so one is reducing our risks. Uh, rich plays a, a large part in that. Uh, we're partners in investing, uh, in systems that will, uh, both reduce the, our vulnerability to attack and in- increase our ability to, uh, detect when there's attacks. Other, to reduce risk, uh, as we get the opportunity to consolidate to shared services. Some of the services that we're bringing in centrally were not, uh, uh, properly architected or funded to be resilient to, uh, normal kinds of mishaps that take on, uh, IT systems. Uh, the other thing, and a very important thing that we're doing, is, uh, reducing our costs across the, the university for, uh, IT. And in the final category, we're increasing capability to try to, uh, to support the strategy and, uh, really specifically, the One Penn State twenty twenty-five initiative that, uh, came out of the strategy is highly dependent on, uh, IT capabilities that we have to develop and deliver to the university. About two-thirds of our IT spend is with staff. So when we reduce the, uh, money that we spend on IT, we are going to reduce the number of people that are working in IT, uh, across the university. We, uh, our la- uh, layoffs would be our last resort, uh, in that case. Uh, we think that we can, uh, approach this in a, uh, a, a smart way, using attrition, turnover, uh, moving people into the skills that we need to set the university up, uh, to go forward. Uh, but there will be, uh, there will be an impact on the number of people who, uh, who are doing IT, uh, at the university. We have set up, uh, four objectives as part of this, uh, our strategic goal. Obviously, we're going to do a better job of, uh, tracking the financial benefits to make sure that we actually can reduce the expense to Penn State. There are other ac- financial activities that we want to track along cost avoidance and transferring to mission, uh, to make sure that we are achieving our goals. I talked about the importance of increasing capability, uh, to meet the, uh, strategic plan. Uh, things like mobile application, uh, and application streaming are critical for that. Improving operational efficiency, the reduction of shared services, uh, where we have duplication of services across the university. And this is going to retire, excuse me, require, uh, a, a pretty significant cultural change that up until now, we have been, not had to differentiate between what we want in terms of IT and what we absolutely need in terms of IT. And we're going to have to make that adjustment, uh, across the university to, uh, make sure that we can operate as efficiently as possible and put our resources towards what's really important to keep Penn State a great university. Our fourth goal is IT governance. We really had not implemented effective IT governance at Penn State, and with the idea of changing from what we, uh, what we want to what we need, it's going to be very important that, uh, the university leadership is involved in making those decisions and what's the appropriate decision, uh, for the university so that we minimize any negative impact and deliver the right, uh, capability. We have about sixteen pro- uh, projects that are underway at this time to support these objectives, uh, and will be, uh, passing, this winter, we'll be passing on the first round of cost cuts, uh, to the Budget Office to implement for the university. So that's a, a really quick update of, of what we're working on, uh, and so I'll stop now and see if there's any questions.
Questions, uh, from the committee?
No, no, well, only compliments.
Yep, me too. I agree, Don. Keep up the great work, and, um, we're behind you on this one.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the update. Um, so I think we can move to adjournment. I just want to say, Joe, Don Cess, and your team, great job, um, once again, on the financial statements. I know it's a big job, a lot of heavy lifting, and, um, once again, you guys, uh, pulled through and did a terrific job, so congratulations.
Thanks, Walt, much appreciated.
Um, before we adjourn, anybody on the committee have anything? Um, and we'll go into executive session with management.
Uh, yeah, well-
Okay. Oh, good, good, Ted. Yep.
Uh, I, I assume there will be not, there can't be any votes during executive session.
No, correct.
In the interest of where I am, I don't think I should participate.
That's fine, I understand. You're calling from, oh, the other end of the world, I get it. So that's fine, not a problem. Thank you for being on.
I, I, I have a security concern, so forgive me, I think I should drop off.
I understand. Thanks, guys. Thank you, Ted.
Okay.
Thanks, Ted.
Okay, so let's, uh, let's move to adjournment, and if I can ask those that are left on the committee on the call, um, and if I could ask management to stay in the room, that would be terrific. Thank you, everybody.